Okay, so we are reconvening after the closed session. And I'm Mr. City Attorney.
There are no more announcements after the closed session. Madam Mayor?
Okay, thank you. So with respect to that, we move into the regular meeting here for Port Wayne Nini City Council. We handled the pre-agenda session a few minutes before we came out here. So we are now into the agenda. Could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Figg?
Here.
Councilmember Hensley?
Here.
Councilmember Sharkey?
Here.
Mayor Protam Breeze?
Here.
Mayor Shonk?
Here. So we'll have the flag salute followed by the inspiration from Mayor Protam Doug Breeze. So make everybody rise.
Part of my inspiration, I'm gonna tell you a story about a bag piper. The story is called "The Bag Piper." Time is like a river. You cannot touch the water twice because the flow that has passed will never pass again. Enjoy every moment of life. As a bag piper, I played many gigs. Recently, I was asked by a funeral director to play at a graveside service for a homeless man. He had no family or friends, so the service was to be at a paupers cemetery in the Nova Scotia back country. As I was not familiar with the backwoods, I got lost. Being a typical man, I didn't stop and ask for directions. I finally arrived an hour late and saw that the funeral guide had evidently gone, and the hearse was nowhere in sight. There was only a few diggers and crew left, and they were eating lunch. I felt badly and apologized to the men for being late. I went to the side of the grave and looked down, and the vault lid had already been put in place. I didn't know what else to do, so I started to play my bagpipes. The workers put down their lunches and began to gather around. I played my heart out and heart and soul out for the man with no family and no friends. I played like I had never played before for this homeless man. And as I played "Amazing Grace," the workers began to weep. They wept, and I wept, and we all wept together. When finally I finished, I picked up my bagpipes and started from my car. Through my mind hung low, my heart was full. As I opened my car door, I heard one of the workers say, "I've never seen anything like this before. I've been putting in septic tanks for over 20 years." There's a moral to that story. Make sure you know what you're doing before you commit yourself. That's what we're gonna be doing here tonight during this budget review, is finding out where we are and figuring out what it is we need to do. This is not the best of times for the city of Port Wayne Nini budget-wise. We're gonna have to dig deep and look in every nook and cranny. The city's been hit very, very hard financially this past year and a half. And this council is gonna have to deal with it, and the city's gonna be in big time trouble. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So we move on to item number four. And that is the agenda. I believe there were some things, Councilmember Henley?
Yes, pulling up item 7B and also the article, item... Just quick questions on these.
Okay, so...
Who did you refer to?
And is there a second? All those in favor, someone? Close? No? All right, so we move the agenda with those noted. And then we move into item number five, presentation. And so we have the Boys and Girls Club recognition of the city's donation. So we have a representative here, and I do have some speaker cards. So we'll have you come up first, and then I'll bring the speakers up.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Erin Antrim, CEO of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Oxnard, and I'm very proud to say, "Port Wayne Nini." On behalf of our Board of Directors and our staff, I'm here to express our sincere gratitude for your investment in children and your faith in our organization. We're excited about our new partnership, which started when you completed the transfer of the city's Pleasant Valley Recreation Center to the Boys and Girls Club about two weeks ago. In doing so, you made an investment of $2.3 million in the youth of this community. The improvements you've made to that building have been tremendous, and they've positioned us to make the club better than it's ever been. We've already begun work on the interior of the building so that we can welcome our members once again later this fall. We're rushing to do so because the children and families of this community need our help. You may recall the story, several months back, a mom shared with you about how much she relied on the club for affordable, actually free, after-school care, including tutoring, fitness programs, and even snacks. Without the Waynimi branch open, she had to pay hundreds of dollars for after-school care, and she had to leave work to pick up her daughter from school and take her to her after-school program, then drive back to work, missing those wages for drive time. We will be open soon to relieve the stress for these families and give children guidance and coaching to become great adults. It is only by your grace and generosity that we will be reopening, and it is by the grace and generosity of this community that we will remain open. Our clubhouse operations and maintenance budget for this facility and the Oxnard site is nearly 100% privately funded by individuals in the communities in which they reside, corporations, and foundations as well. We rely completely on donations to sustain our programs and maintain our facilities. It's important that you know that your contribution of this building is the cornerstone of a community-wide fundraising campaign to ensure we keep this beautiful building in top shape for the long term. We are undertaking this campaign even as we work towards completing upgrades in the building. When our community's children walk into that clubhouse, they will see that their community cares about them. And it cares about them by giving them a safe place away from gangs, away from violence, and away from drugs. The Boys and Girls Club is a place where great futures start, and I want to thank you for the start of this new partnership. And I'd like to bring up Tony Valante and Steve Kenny. We have a small token of our appreciation. I also want to let you know that when we reopen and we have our grand reopening ceremony, there will be a plaque inside that building with all of your names on it showing the generosity that you've made.
So, Madam Mayor, if you would come down?
Madam Mayor, I'll be careful. She needs to... The committee chair, the head of the panel. I've never been in a casino and told you. And especially to Mayor Protam Breeze for bringing that up for the body. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Thank you. And I think there's some photographs here. Thank you. Yeah, so can I bring up the speakers? And then we can have the members on the dais say something. So let's see. We have speaker card, Steve Kenny? Yep. Go ahead, Steve.
Right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Soss. Good evening all, and as Erin so eloquently said, thank you, thank you, thank you. I just wanted to make two points for you tonight. Number one, I think it's remarkable that in these bleak times, you have still found a way to convert the city asset into leverage, the asset if you will, into a situation where now the kids of Port Wayne Nini are able to get access to the after-school services and recreational resources that they need at absolutely no cost to the city of Port Wayne Nini. And in fact, you've gone and made that asset, that building, also been transferred to us. So that's one piece of pretty good news budget-wise in an evening where you probably don't have a lot of good news to talk about. And the second thing I want to mention to you is, as Erin said, we are starting a capital campaign. We're using this as sort of the starting point, the leaping off platform, having this asset now under our control, to go out to the community and transmit more funds to both increase the quality of the interior finishes and the resources of the building and establish a long-term maintenance fund. So what's there now, after we finish up all the new improvements, will stay instead for the long term. As you can well imagine, to raise capital money, you just can't do it unless you own the facility you're trying to attract the money to. So the transfer title to the Boys and Girls Club is absolutely essential for our campaign to have any chance of success. Now that's done, we are launching the campaign with vigor, and we're very happy that we've got the pro bono assistance of Gary Erickson to guide us in this fundraising campaign. Gary, as you know, is a very well-respected fundraising consultant in Ventura County. He happens to have a very personal tie to Port Wayne Nini and to the very clubhouse, having been a past Port Wayne Nini planning commissioner, having been a past president of the Boys and Girls Club, let's say, several years ago. So he's got his heart in it. He's donating his services to our club and through his expertise and the hard work of the volunteers of the board and the staff of the Boys and Girls Club. We anticipate a successful campaigning to make your former asset now the community's asset of a real role for the long term. So again, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Steve. And then we have a speaker card for Tony Valante.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Protam, councilmembers. I'm not gonna repeat all that has been said tonight, but it's a personal victory for myself. It's been on that board for 22 years. And I have seen the changes in our kids. Because I go in there and I... You know, you have to be in here to see these kids. But I gotta tell you, I just, as a personal thank you to you all for this moment that I stand before you. It is just so rewarding. And I just had to come up and say thank you to all of you and for your support over the past years for the Boys and Girls Clubs. Waynimi is gonna be a great club for us, and we're gonna have a great partnership with the city. So I still work for the city. I love this city. Barbara and I love this city, especially the Boys and Girls Clubs. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tony. And there were a few comments from the dais here. So does anybody wanna say anything? Did you wanna say something? Oh, Councilmember Hensley.
You don't know how gratified... There we go, the wrong way. You don't know how gratified I am to see this happen and it's come to fruition. I get a chance to finally hear and meet Steve Kenny, who I've heard about a lot. Colonel Valante, I've known him for many, many years when we were both in the Air Force. So it's all come together, and I think it's happening great that the Boys and Girls Club and the city of Port Wayne Nini has a way of taking care of our kids now. Thank you so much, all of you that contributed and put in and drove for this whole thing.
Yeah, Councilmember Figg?
Wrong, maybe. I recall when we made this decision back in February. It was a very inspirational moment. And I want to thank Mayor Protam Breeze for really showing some incredible leadership because it was a very difficult decision, given the budget issues we were having to deal with then, as we will be this evening. But all in all, it was a highlight of my short tenure on this council. But more inspirational than that evening, I'm hoping, and I'll be more inspired when the building's occupied. So whatever we can do, or if I can personally assist, the sooner the better. And then this last comment is, "Doug, I don't know if you're about to put your property on the market, but I'd like to offer you a buck." You're such a generous guy. Congratulations.
And yes, Councilmember Sharkey?
The city and the Boys and Girls Club have had a long, long relationship, and we look forward to that continuing. We look forward to a great deal of success for the Boys and Girls Club at the Anthony J. Valante Center. And Godspeed and fair winds and fall receipts. We're all in this together, and we wanna make this work, and we look forward to a great deal of success.
Mayor Protam Breeze?
Yeah, I appreciate the kind comments from the fellow councilmembers up here. Just to be clear, the city of Port Wayne Nini is spending over $50,000 a year to maintain that building for the use of the Boys and Girls Club. And as Mr. Kenny mentioned, because the Boys and Girls Club didn't own the building, they had a real difficult time seeking funding to help their operations. So they leaned more on the city. And so to make this work, the Boys and Girls Club needed to own that building. And you can see the results of it tonight. The city's gonna save at least $50,000 a year on money they used to spend on maintenance of the building. And the Boys and Girls Club now has the opportunity to go out and seek adequate funding to properly maintain the building and properly operate their programs in it. I think it's a win-win situation for both organizations, but the big winner is our community. I was watching a movie the other night, "The Equalizer," with Denzel Washington in it. It's a good movie, if you get a chance to see it, if you like "Shooting Minds." And my wife said, "Oh, that Denzel Washington, he's a product of the Boys and Girls Club." So the Boys and Girls Club is far-reaching tentacles into our community, and I'm very happy and confident with the management of the Boys and Girls Club and the Board of Directors that the Boys and Girls Club that we have on Pleasant Valley next to the post office is gonna be fabulous and a much-needed and appreciated benefit to the young folks in our community. Thank you very much.
And I did owe everything that my colleagues here on the dais have said, with the Boys and Girls Club being back in the city and offering these programs to our kids, but also to all the families that are taking up on the offer for a safe place for the kids. That's what really matters. I know I'm a product of the Girls Club. That was the predecessor for the Joint Boys and Girls Club. And I was growing a year once. And so that was an honor back when I was younger. Thank you, thank you. But there's so many wonderful things that you provide to the kids. Not only the activities, but also they learn about team building. They learn about themselves. And it's something that they'll reflect on for the rest of their lives. So congratulations. And best wishes for your capital campaign and everything else that you're gonna be undertaking. Thank you. Okay, so moving on through the agenda, we have item number six, which is open forum. So anyone wishing to speak on matters not on the agenda may do so at this time. I do have a couple of speaker cards, so I'll call them up. You have three minutes to speak. You need to state your name and your address, and then you'll see the clock start. So the first speaker card I have is Anka Simmons. Okay, yeah. So come on up to the podium.
Madam Mayor, could I yield to one colleague and then follow him? Is that possible? Ron Whitehurst?
Ron Whitehurst. So Ron, you wanna come first? Okay. So go ahead and state your name and your address.
My name's Ron Whitehurst. I'm a small business owner on the north side of Ventura. And I'm with the China Lyle and Community Choice Energy Group. We're a group of local business persons and other citizens that are promoting this Community Choice Energy, which is basically, let's see, some legislation that allows cities to band together to purchase their energy. And then the utility continues to distribute the energy and provide the billing. So the cities just take over the purchasing function. And so there's a lot of advantages to that. The Ventura County Council resolved on August 11th to have the unincorporated areas be part of this aggregation to purchase energy. And they authorized $50,000 to pay for the studies and download the data on the rates that we're currently paying so that we can look at basically forming a business plan. At that point, once we get the rate data pulled, then we'll be coming to the cities and asking them to commit to the aggregation. But right now, we're approaching the cities, and as I understand the process, you'll be asked to form a... Have a resolution that you'll participate in the study to see, to release your rate data so you can see, get the numbers to see if it makes sense from a business standpoint. So there's a number of different aspects of choice that are involved. The cost of the power that is acquired. So in the other models, Marin has been operating a CCE for five years, and they have lower rates for electricity. So lower rates for electricity look good, and that's a great... It's great motivation to look at this. The Joint Powers Agency, every city will get a position on this joint powers authority, and they can set the rates for the group, which would be basically Ventura County and maybe part of Santa Barbara County. And they can prioritize purchasing power that's produced within the county. And there's money that would be... That would come from operating this agency that would be available to put into renewable energy projects within the county, which would produce a lot of jobs. For every million dollars invested in renewable sources of energy, there's, you know, two to nine times more jobs generated than comparable investment in petroleum. So there's a lot of opportunities, and especially with tight budget, would ask you to consider joining the Community Choice Energy when you have the option. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. And then now we have Anka Simmons. Please come up to the podium. Thanks.
And then Brett Launton, if you'd like.
Yeah.
Thank you for your courtesy, Madam Mayor, and letting me go second. Honorable councilmembers, I'd like to focus my remarks on some of the flexibility within the CCE, the Community Choice Energy models that are already up and running in the here and now. And as Ron mentioned, there's Marin Clean Energy, which was first, then Sonoma Clean Energy, Clean Power, which was second, and most recently in May of this year, Lancaster City, as a municipality, became a CCE. And obviously, these are three very different geographical regions with three very different constituencies, but they all found it in their interest to move forward with setting up the CCE, both with lower costs of energy, about 3% less for electricity than the incumbent utility, and with higher renewable energy portfolios, which was also important in all of the districts. And so there's a lot of flexibility within the model that is pursuant to AB 117 and SB 790. And the flexibility has been shown by all three of these different entities. Two of them are JPAs, Sonoma and Marin. Lancaster decided to move it all into their city government and hired an outside consultant. Marin set up first five years ago, and after Marin set up, then Richmond, and then El Cerritos and Pablo Bernicia, the unincorporated areas. The map I saw that was producing at a cheap price and meeting its goals, and then locked it into the system. Sonoma started with the unincorporated areas of the county, and within one year, they set up in 2014, within one year, all of the cities came in, except Hillsburg, which had its own municipal utility. There is also considerable flexibility in the kinds of projects that they've adopted since setting up and taking advantage of local conditions. Marin has done solar panels on top of the airports, solar panels on landfills, biogas on waste dumps. They've done a 60-acre brownfield deal with Chevron to set up a utility-scale solar plant. They bought wind energy from Kern County. And all of these have done this with differences in power purchasing agreements for three to 25 years, with local projects, with renewable energy credits, which they bought on the market that exists both in California and nationally. And they all have public bonding authority. And in implementing the policies, they've had different policies for feeding tariffs, roofs, renewable purchase standards, care customers, medical-based customers, and so, and energy efficiency programs. So they've had a lot of variation in what they've done. And I just think that this is a great opportunity since Ventura and since Santa Barbara are going forward with this study. It's a great opportunity for the cities to look at the feasibility study, sign on and support it, get done for minimal costs with a non-binding resolution. Get the data, look at it, have the data, and then see if it pencils out for your community and for Ventura County. And if you have the data, you're in a good position, made a good choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Sharkey?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna use this opportunity to report to this item was before the Regional Energy Alliance. And the $50,000 that the county of Ventura appropriated, it was at the invitation of Santa Barbara County and some of the cities in Santa Barbara County that has already started down this trail to a feasibility study. The county's taking the lead on this. Supervisor Kathy Long is, of course, the chair of the Regional Energy Alliance, and we expect to be hearing more from her. This is, Marin and Sonoma efforts are going well, and Arcata was looking at it and having some problems. It's a very interesting proposal. It looks a lot better than the stuff that people were doing about 15 years ago, this last time this came around. And with the discussions that we've had with Southern California Edison, most recently in this chamber, this may actually provide an alternative. So as this comes down, I will urge council support of this. I believe Galita signed on for no cash input at all. They just signed on. And as this comes down, I'm sure we'll be hearing from Supervisor Long on this in the future, and I think it is a good idea. I'd like to see us pursue it.
All right, thank you. And we have a speaker card from Brett. Is it Levin?
Levin.
Levin, okay. State your name and your address.
Yeah, Brett Levin. I'm a resident of Ventura. And just here to, well, first, thank you. And just here to, well, first, thank you for your work. And I guess further rally your support for community choice energy. As far as the research I've done, it seems to basically be the best option forward for, you know, giving citizens an option when it comes to their energy choices. Basically, creates an entity that will then decide where the energy is coming from. So then the individual homeowner or business can, they can stick with the utility that's still there now, or they can choose a source that's most likely going to be cheaper and coming from renewable sources. This then allows for businesses to put solar panels on their roof, potentially create revenue streams that otherwise wouldn't be there, because they can sell the energy back to the community. And yeah, I mean, all of these things seem to line up, that just kind of would make sense for the future. So yeah, I guess I'm just here to ask for your support if it comes across your table. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then we have a speaker card from Jack McGrath.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I first want to feel positive, because I'm going to get after that, a couple of things that I'm not too happy about. The festival was fantastic. I've been here four years, it was just wonderful. I've never seen a 72-year-old dancer doing the disco and a woman thinking she was Donna Summers. It was just fantastic. It gave me wonder. My wife's, I've never seen her dance like that. So thank you all of you, thank you the staff. It was just put on magnificent. I was out of town Saturday, I came back, and I saw something that really disturbed me. And it's, I'm sure you've all seen it, it's the article out of the Star about the volunteer quote-unquote, who was fired by the city. And I read it, and I said, I've never heard of a volunteer being fired by a city. It just doesn't seem possible. And I read it further, and the gentleman's name is Chuck Swankowski, and he's the pastor of New Life Community Church, working 10 years to help this city. And he did something that I hope I wouldn't be arrested by any of the police officers here, by telling you if I disagreed with you or I agreed with you, First Amendment privileges protected by the United States Constitution and California Constitution. And I think it's just unbelievably nasty what you did to him. He has a job himself, and if I was any of his parishioners and I saw that he was fired from the city, I may not come back to that church. So I'm going to ask you to do two things. One, make an apology. I don't even know that, and I gotta watch myself when I say this about the chief of police or interim chief. His language was poor, not thought out. And some people, I already know, some lawyers are trying to reach Mr. Sandowski and talk to him about libel slander, slander and defamation of character. This is a real serious thing. In my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, but I have a lot of lawyer friends. Secondly, and finally, I'll just say, give him a thank you for 10 years of service. I'm sure he's not going to come back, he's so embarrassed by what happened. But if I worked here as a volunteer and gave 10 hours a week, and I stopped, I would expect at least a nice thank you and a little note. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on any matters not on the agenda? Okay, so at this point then, we're moving to the consent agenda, item number seven. And I'm just asking for clarification right now, because we have an opportunity either to jointly open the housing and spa at this point? No, not yet? Okay. Clarification?
I think it's for purposes of the budget discussion, so.
Okay, so we can move it, okay. All right, I had it noted here about this one. Okay, so we're on to the consent agenda, but we have items 7B and 7E pulled off.
So I'm going to approve the amended consent agenda.
Is there, okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, so the consent agenda is amended, passes, and then we will have then item number 7B first, and then 7E. So with that, Councilmember Hensley.
I'm just asking for an individual vote, because I'm going to abstain.
All right, so with, you didn't have any questions for staff on that? Okay, so then, okay, so then we're on 7B, which is cast dispersments. Is there a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
You abstain on 7B?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then we are on 7E, and that was the grant juror reporting countywide bicycle safety. So Councilmember Hensley, you wanted to pull that?
Yes, I'm, I'm kind of interested, just a short note. It's something that's very important. In fact, I know some people in the community that are looking for bicycle and walking paths to create a healthier wellness community here. And I kind of reached back, because I had a report a few months ago from our Ventura County Transportation Committee representative, and I understand that we did not put in for our, almost an automatic grant this year, and I'm wondering why that didn't happen.
Hi. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to address you. The concern we have with the grant application is that the grant requires a local match. And due to the dire financial situation of the city's general fund, we opted not to encumber or force the city to spend money from the general fund, when it ultimately might be more prudent to keep that money for other things. We do have a possibility that we're looking into the future for future grants, which would be possibly combining a known project that may be at the beach with some additional sidewalk, which we would hope to install. If we could possibly find that, that applies for the grant in the future, or we're looking into that situation.
If I may, Mr. Tyson, thank you so much for bringing that to the light. I kind of wish I'd have known about it before, because I served in that committee, and it's almost an automatic when they do it, but understandable, there's a problem with matching funds. Hopefully, this year, it's going to still come about, if we can find a way to squirrel away a little bit of matching funds. The matching, a lot of times that'll commission, if you come up with 25%, they'll grant something that seems feasible. So I hope we can do that, because it's very important for our community, and I know you try your fanny off, so really appreciate what you do. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Sharkey.
Well, since this is on the table, I do want to comment on the real improvements we've seen in bike, bike trails around this city. We've done a lot with class two bikeways and improving the class one bike way on Ventura Road, which is still a design problem, because it's on the wrong side of the street, and it dead-ends, but what we've done is pretty good. But the, the one thing we really need to do, and this is not, especially germane to this item, and I'm not sure how we even go about it, is we need better bicycle education. We have beautiful wide class two bikeways, and yet I still see people riding the wrong way down the sidewalk. And there was, there was a juvenile lady I stopped, and I said, well, you've got this bike way, this, this why? Why aren't you riding down it? And she's riding the wrong way down the sidewalk. She says, I'm afraid. Well, it's actually a lot more dangerous to ride on the sidewalk, but that's another matter. So at some point, I don't know if there's, there's groups around the county, who we connect with, but there's, there's got to be some better bicycle education going on, because people aren't using the bikeways that we have, they're riding on the sidewalk, and usually the wrong way. And I don't know how we get through, but I see that day after day after day, and it just, it's just, as someone who wants to use the bicycle as a major part of my transportation, it just is really hard to, hard to accept.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Sharkey, I really appreciate that. While you were saying that, a thought came to my mind. We have the Boys and Girls Club, which has the facilities and the weather with all, and we have an outstanding police department. Maybe we can get some sort of connection, a nexus here between the Boys and Girls Club and put on some sort of bicycle training programs. I'm sure we can go through the school to do the same things or similar issues. The one thing that I saw in this report that was interesting, most of the people that was killed or seriously injured were 50, 60, and 70-year-olds, not quite so many kids. Thank you.
Okay, so we have item 7E. Is there a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so we move on 7E and all of the consent items. Moving on to item, I want to make sure I don't have these speaker cards here. Oh, you know what? Let me apologize, there were a couple of other things sitting for item six. Pardon? Yeah, so let me call up, I have one person, but two speaker cards, right? Tracy Sisson Phillips, if we could just digress here for a moment, and you can come up. You know that I'm shuffling all this paperwork, I've actually asked Mayor Pro Tempris to move over a little bit. So go ahead, Tracy.
It's quite a right, madam, and there are no over feelings here. Tracy Sisson Phillips, CEO of the Waynami Chamber of Commerce, with a quick update on Chamber happenings. First of all, my congratulations to the city staff for once again putting on another fantastic Waynami Beach Festival, and congratulations to being able to bring back the sandcastle competition, which I heard went very, very well. Our breakfast series continues. In September, we'll be having the State of the City address on September 23rd, and we are already over 50% sold out to capacity, which is exciting for us. In November, we will be having the State of the Port address, and then also in December, our annual white elephant gift exchange. And if you have not been, don't miss it, because it's a ton of fun at the Holiday and Express. We have two nights left this season for Sunset Supper, Tuesday, September 8th, and Tuesday, October 13th, which happened to be our best month for sunsets in the city. The partnership with the Surfside Seafood has been amazing, and the entertainment has definitely been bringing down people to the beach, gaining a lot more exposure for our city and that particular part of the beach. Starting our planning for our third annual holiday tree lighting, which will be held on December 3rd. And that's what's new and shaken at the Chamber. And now, I would like to put on my residence hat. My name is Tracy Sisson Phillips, and I reside at 1793 North Fifth Street, Port Waynami. Earlier this year, in May timeframe exactly, I came up and expressed some concerns that I was having regarding traffic safety at Bard and Ventura Road at the entrance to Naval Base Ventura County. A few weeks back, Naval Base Ventura County announced that they were going to be closing the Barge Gate indefinitely, and the CEO cited reason for that being, one, force protection measures that needed to be updated for Naval Base Ventura County with regards to the location of the actual guard shack in proximity to Ventura Road, and then also traffic accidents that were being recorded in the city. Unfortunately, some of the individuals driving, turning into Naval Base Ventura County don't know that when the light turns yellow, that doesn't mean punch it and back up traffic into the intersection. Well, last week, Naval Base Ventura County also announced that they are closing the Pleasant Valley gate while it is revamped, again for force protection measures. Unfortunately, the closure of both of these gates has caused, once again, some traffic issues in our city, specifically at the intersection of Sunkist and Ventura Road, which is very close to my home. Traffic continues to back up in that intersection, because the timing on the lights are so short, it does not allow for many cars to go, coming from our on Sunkist to cross into the base. Also, the traffic that's being diverted from the Pleasant Valley and Barge Gates is now diverting through the tract homes there and causing major backups on those residential streets. I would like to ask that Port Waynami Police Department, Public Works, work in conjunction with Naval Base Ventura County to keep our streets safe and reduce the amount of jam traffic on Ventura Road. I've lived here for almost all my life, and I cannot tell you the number of accidents I've seen and actually been in one myself at that intersection. And I know that we have a right to protect our citizens, we also have a right to be good partners with Naval Base Ventura County, but this is a concern, because they have no, given no timeframe on when the gate will reopen at Pleasant Valley, that's only going to continue to occur in our city. So thank you for your time and your concern for our residents and our sailors here at Naval Base Ventura County.
No, Ms. Phillips, I actually witnessed the long line that backs up at Sunkist, and I've hit it the last couple of mornings, and from last week on, it wasn't as bad until we made these changes. And so it almost backs up to then the previous street. Bard backs up, or Sunkist backs up as far as Bard.
As far back as Pleasant Valley.
And so there's a concern, so thanks, we'll, we'll note that and see what we can do with, with information to this, to the community.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So, thanks for allowing me to digress here, bring up the last of the consent, yes.
I think it might be appropriate to set up a meeting with Captain Yonky regarding this issue. If you don't want to do it, I'd be happy to.
Yes, so I'll work with our city manager, see what we can come up with there.
Remember, on that topic here, this was one of the topics that came up in the joint land use study meetings, and one of the objectives was to have better communication on traffic and better coordination. I don't know if that's happening or if it's not happening.
It sounds like it.
I, you know, I think there's, you know, with a change of command, I mean, there's been some, I think degradation of communication between the two of us here, and I think we need to start working on that.
If I may add, I did call the city when I first found out about the closure, and the response I got, I didn't call PD, I just called into the city, and the response I got was, oh, we didn't know anything about.
I haven't known anything about that. Okay.
So thanks for bringing that up. Okay, so we are moving on to item eight, and to Madam City Clerk.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. We're returning with the item on the video options for the city council meetings. I'm joined once again by my team, Aaron Wiedemeyer, the IT manager, and Matt Bender, the facility's technician. We have a staff report in your packet that presents three options, and what we're asking you to do at this time is allow us to make our report, ask any technical questions that you may have, but then reserve your decision or taking any action until the more general budget discussion, which is going to be the next topic that you take up on the agenda, because it's going to be presented as a program option that, you know, you may choose to, well, you know, you'll be making a choice then. So back in February, as you'll recall, you took place, you took part in the annual goal setting workshop, where the council discussed the priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. And one of the stated priorities was to increase transparency by way of broadcasting the city council meetings. So in May, Mr. Bender and Mr. Wiedemeyer and I presented to you a report, and after much discussion, the ultimate direction to staff was to craft an RFP that would include specifications for live streaming of city council meetings as well as other video options. So, I'm sorry, one of, some of the other options were videotaping of community events, archiving of historical items at the museum, and possibly. archiving of historical items at the museum, and possibly creating a community access channel among other things. So you'll see in your packet that we crafted the RFP. And there's a draft in there. The primary request of any potential vendors is to have them, sorry, to have them submit a proposal for live streaming of the council meetings. And that could take the form of either an in-house system that would be, you know, set up for the city that the city staff would control, or as an outside video service, you know, on a contract basis. And then they also have the opportunity to secondarily do additional services. But that was an optional. That was an requirement of the proposal. A few of the goals and specifications in the RFP are for live streaming of City Council meetings from at least two cameras, as well as the ability to switch to any overhead presentations that would be presented during the council meeting. That the video would be viewable on a variety of devices, whether it's a desktop computer, a laptop computer, a tablet, a mobile phone. And also archiving the videos and making them searchable, possibly by keyword. We're asking potential vendors to provide a proposal with a three-week response deadline. And then allowing for a two-week review period by staff, which would include a demonstration by potential vendors of their product and what they have to offer. And then returning to the City Council on October 19th for approval. The evaluation of the top candidates would be based on the vendor's experience and past performance providing these services for other cities. The user friendliness of the solution, if people are going to be able to, you know, use it easily from their home or wherever they're viewing the livestream. The quality of the proposal that's submitted, cost, and the timeframe for implementation. Because I know that the council is eager to get started on something like this. And the cost range, it's kind of a wide range. It could range from forty-eight hundred dollars to twenty-three thousand dollars. In crafting the RFP and further investigating the options for this report, we also took a look at the possibility of just live streaming audio. And it turns out that the vendor that provides our website services, Civic Plus, they have an optional module called Media Center. And that would normally cost a thousand dollars a year for ten gigabytes of storage, but they're willing to give it to us on a trial period for the first year for free. And what you can do with Media Center is you can live stream as well as, you know, just post videos or audio after the fact for on-demand viewing. And we're estimating that for about fifteen hundred dollars, we would be able to buy, as a one-time fee, the computer and necessary equipment to be able to audio stream the City Council meetings live via Media Center. And we're presenting this as an additional option because it's sort of taking baby steps towards the council's ultimate goal of video, you know, live video streaming of the Council meetings. But, you know, recognizing that that can have quite a heavy cost to it, we thought that, you know, presenting this as an option, it might be a lower-cost alternative, while at the same time accomplishing the council's goals of increasing the transparency among the public by making the meetings available live to people from their homes. And then in future years, we can always upgrade to a video option, you know, installing cameras. We're just kind of working our way up to that. And because it's free for the first year, you know, it's kind of a low-risk opportunity. And then occupancy is to just continue the status quo of what we do now. We record the council meetings digitally and then post it on our website after the meetings. So if the council has any questions of any of us, we're here to help you figure this out.
Okay, any questions? Yes, Mayor Pro-Trend Breeze?
Yeah, on the, on the audio live streaming, is there a visual that would be on a screen as someone listens to the council? In other words, a slideshow of the city, or would it just be a blank screen, or how would that work?
Probably just a blank screen with like maybe an icon of, you know, maybe a speaker or something. But it's not really a slideshow.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Sharkey?
Yeah, the Civic Plus Media Center, it allows to post new videos, it allows for live video streaming as well?
Yes, it does.
It does. So we could live stream on the Civic Plus Media Center?
Okay, yes.
And they wouldn't give us the years for trial of that? Just only maybe on the audio?
No, no, it's a year, you have the option of either doing video or audio.
So we could do live streams on the Civic Plus site that we're using now?
We can, yes. The only thing is that, you know, as presenting this as sort of a lower-cost option, you know, video equipment is gonna be a lot more expensive than purchasing, you know, just the sound cards and a cheap computer dedicated for audio lectures.
Right, but you know, the cost of video equipment's come down a lot since the last time we looked at this, you know. That seems, you know, that seems like that would be the most economical way to achieve a video stream, particularly if they're gonna give us a free year. And all we gotta do is buy a camera or two. And so that's, that seems very interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Hensley?
Yes, thank you. Sounds like a good deal if they do it for free. There's certain expenses to imagine. Also, will they archive it, that people can go in and check it if they're not available during the live stream time?
Yes, we'll get up to ten gigabytes of storage for any videos or audio recordings that we pass.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mayor Pro-Trend Breeze?
Do they indicate what the cost would be after the first year?
It's a thousand dollars for up to ten gigabytes of storage.
So they're waiving the thousand dollars for the first year?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so thank you, Madam City Clerk, and thank you team for the misinformation. Thank you.
Well, is council action...
No, it's coming back through the budget.
We have the recommendation.
So this is gonna be folded into the budget discussion?
This will be folded into the budget as a program option so that you'll be able to look at this among all the other items that you may wanna do or decide you don't wanna do.
Okay, so we are now at item number... Oh, you know what? There is one speaker part, sorry. For eight A, we have Steven, is it Gomez?
Gama.
Gama, okay. Come on up, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Madam Mayor, Council, administrative staff, my name is Steven Gama. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. I'm in the 435 San Miguel Circle. I wanna speak on eight A. But before I do that, I just want to get on the record that earlier I spoke in support of the Whaneynee Police Department and against outsourcing to the Sheriff's Department. And I was very relieved to be told that that is not currently a consideration of this board. Am I correct in stating that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On eight A, I wanna encourage you to be transparent. All of us keep hearing everyone says, "Oh yeah, transparency, transparency." But no one seems to be able to be transparent. And I think in this modern age, I think Whaneynee is one of the only cities in the county that doesn't broadcast their meetings live. What's really neat about Oxnard Union High School District, the city of Oxnard, is their meetings are run over and over and over again. So it really gives the community a chance at three in the morning if they get off work that late to watch a council meeting. So I think it's a no-brainer decision in this modern time that you need to get streaming on the public access TVs to get more interaction with the community, to get more input. This is the first time I've ever come to a meeting and I was misinformed, apparently. So I would strongly encourage you to take the step to be transparent. And yes, it's gonna cost money. We all recognize that. And at first, when Mayor Pro-Trend Breeze said, "Oh, we're in tough budgetary times." And then the very next time, he just gave away a very valuable asset to the Boys and Girls Club. And at first I was thinking, "Wow, that's kind of weird." But after listening and knowing what the value added is gonna be by getting those kids in that Boys and Girls Club, it's gonna make the police department's job easier down the road. And so cost is a factor. But obviously, in your decision with the Boys and Girls Club, you weigh the intrinsic value. On this issue of transparency, I think you need to take a step to be more transparent, not just the minimum of transparency, but do all that you can to really open up the city business to the residents. And I encourage you to take the full step, to be transparent through video and get it looping on the TV at three in the morning so when I can't sleep, I can watch it.
It'll put you to sleep.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna take like a five-minute break here. We'll take a five-minute break and then we convene for item number nine and the rest of the evening.